Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can call that when the item comes up. And we'll go any, I don't have, okay, additions or deletions? So, is this, the PACE program's on there already? Strategic Priorities, so there's really no additions? Does anybody have any additions? We're good? Okay, go ahead.
Moved and seconded?
Okay, moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Staff report, CAO report. Any questions for the CAO? First of all, welcome back Sandy.
Hey! Hey! Woo-hoo! Keep waiting to check, will you Sandy? Get your line.
Okay, no questions for the CAO? Did you want to share anything? You good? Okay. Oh, sorry, I can't, yeah, the flag is in the way.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I thought you people were going to discuss how much we're asking Jeff to read these motions. Were you going to, I thought, it hasn't changed yet. You know, we give you so much work to do and we wonder if it's appropriate, that's all.
Yeah, so we still had, just haven't had time. That's what it is. We just haven't had five minutes to sit and talk about that, but we certainly will. Thank you Jim. Go ahead Phil.
Yeah, thank you your worship. Jeff, just a question. The Aberdeen job down on Main Street, how's that get, they come and test it afterwards and they said they're gonna go up and dig it up and then do a little, how do they test that, or how's that work?
Are you referring to the asphalt issue?
Yeah.
It's rather obvious, the deficiency, if you drive over it and you pay attention to how your vehicle is acting, it is very rolly, uneven, bumpy.
Yeah.
And the grades are provided by our surveyor and through our engineer that, so that water runs in the right direction to the catch bases and so on. It just isn't right. So, it does need to be repaired. The engineer, our engineers had that discussion with them, so it isn't a case of, you know, the asphalt not being strong enough or anything like that, it is just about how it was applied, how it was put down.
Okay. I thought, we don't pay for that, do we?
No, that's, that's.
Okay, good. Okay, go ahead.
Just follow up there.
No, wait a second Cliff, Sandy's on.
I was just wondering Jeff, I looked at the CAO tasks and I'm just wondering, I didn't see on there about having a washroom downtown that we had. Is that still, are we still going to work on that?
Go ahead.
Um, was a motion on there about a washroom downtown? I remember.
Yeah, I had made a motion.
We had staff look into that.
Yes.
And there was a solution for a self standalone, self-cleaning washroom at about a hundred thousand. And some of the councilors at FCM actually got to see that at the trade show.
Yeah, I did too, yeah.
It is a regno. We don't have anything budgeted for that, so if council wishes to, for that sort of solution, you could refer that to budget.
Okay.
If there's another way you'd like to crack it, you know, by having a public washroom, then we can talk about that. But that is the, I'll say, it's a solution.
Yeah, also, I had brought up that maybe we could speak with like, one of the buildings downtown that could actually offer a public washroom. That we could actually have a sign by the building, say a public washroom. Like, if you could work like the building that Tim Hortons is in, or somewhere.
With the business.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just so that people would know where they can go to the washroom.
We can put that out there.
Yeah.
You know, we talked to the business community, we can put that out there and see if anybody's interested in putting that on their, you know, I think restaurants, cafes are probably the most likely candidates, but we can talk to them and see if anybody's interested in...
Even if we had to pay them a little bit, it's cheaper than a hundred thousand for a washroom.
Paying, yeah, paying to clean it more than anything.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, they were, that was neat. Go ahead Cliff.
So your worship, a follow-up to the deputy's question. I happened to leave to go home for some lunch and I walked up the street and our inspector's John Wainwright, and he informed me as to what they're in the process of doing and so on, and that's what we have inspectors for. And they'll get it right. They may have to do a fair amount of tearing up and there might be some disruption of traffic to do it, but that's all part of the contract, within the contract parameters. Interestingly enough, and it'll come up later, as you go up Cliff Street, I asked the questions about the condition of the laterals, particularly the sewer laterals, because that's coming up. And they're finding that, first of all, they're old, they're clay, and they're all in great condition. I don't think there's a street in town that has any more traffic, trucks and so on, in the central part of town than Cliff Street. So, all of this anecdotal stuff about trucks and cars causing these laterals to collapse is probably a bunch of malarkey of vehicle life. And we'll discuss that later. But that's, as of today, talking to the workmen on the street. The other point is, they've come across six lead pipe water services, which we are replacing with plastic to the property line. And is anything doing, anything being done to notify the property owners that there's an opportunity to fix it now, and they aren't? And I said I'd bring it up, so I'm bringing it up now. We need to look at that, because we could be proactive when we're doing this. We know where those lines are and they're still not buried, and they're potential failure coming down the road. The lead pipes will still exist from the property line to the house, if we don't do something about it now and later on enough tear up a pavement and charge somebody a whole bunch of money to re-enter the sewer and so on.
Yeah, please.
I mean, look, I'm just thinking about, this was half an hour ago.
It's a good, it's a good point.
If I may, so, so we've talked about lead, lead services and obviously, they need to be replaced. And this is, I think, how Halifax is dealing with theirs, is as they're doing projects, as they discover them, they're changing them. So, if I understood you correctly, they're not informing the property owner?
My understanding is they're not informing the property owners as they go, they're doing the work. It's routine.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're within their contractual obligations when they do that, but I'm thinking one step further here right now. We ought to be notifying the property owners and giving them an opportunity to deal with it now, when it would probably be cheaper than it will be ten, fifteen, five, two years from now, when their lead pipe fails. Better to the point, they're recommending, right across Canada, that these things be replaced regardless. So, I don't think it's compulsory for a landowner, for a property owner to do that right now, but it's likely common. And, and we should be inventorying those. That's the other thing. I don't know if we're doing that right now, I didn't ask that question, I'm thinking as I go here. We should be inventorying where the lead pipes are if we don't know. And that's, at least on Cliff Street, we'll have a golden opportunity to do that.
From the curb stop in, they're not ours, like, we're replacing our port, our part, but...
Yeah, we're replacing right at the curb stop.
Understand that.
We are, yes.
But we should...
I understand that.
But we should...
The point is, is that we know that it's recommended that those things be replaced right through the system and torn out completely. We know that. Secondly, I'm not sure we know, as we go, where the lead is anyway. We're gonna be leaving lead in the ground, right now, as it goes. We're gonna be leaving lead in the ground from the property line to the residence.
We may as well keep it going.
So, in your record, you have a record?
Yeah.
Okay. But we haven't, we've never taken the proactive step to get a hold of the property owner.
Right now, it wouldn't be an opportunity to, to run lead into the house because we have two different contractors.
I understand that. Well, enough said.
No, let's figure it out.
So, Dave, is it your intention to notify the property owners?
Yeah, you can do that. You can put it right in there.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think you can do much more than that.
No, I agree. You advise the prices of replacement stuff there.
But save, if it's, we knew that, we take that step.
Go ahead.
Take, take that step.
Put that on, go ahead.
If we take that step, then we have less, there's less of a chance that the individual's raising the point, ten years from now, five, whatever. We covered that. Here it is on our records. You could've done it when we did, here's what it's gonna cost you.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this, we're doing work on Cliff Street, for example, and we're saying we want to notify the owners of the homes that have the laterals, and they make a choice as to whether they want to replace them at that time.
So I think that would be a good, careful, so...
Their portion, yeah.
We are replacing where to the curb stop, which is the gas portion.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, I just want to make sure the water is all to the metal and the curb stop.
So how far is that, I think is what she wants to know, right?
More or less, that's probably...
Okay. So we're replacing, we're replacing that right up to the curb?
Yes.
Okay, so then if the owner later on does it, he doesn't have to dig up the street again, right? Okay, perfect.
Okay, so Cliff, do you want to make a motion?
No.
Oh, sorry Donna, can't, I got flags all over the place, I can't see let...
I just want to know an estimated cost. I think there's where your homeowners would be worried about, how much it's gonna cost me now and how much it's gonna cost me later. Now later, we know that it's gonna be higher, but right now, how many, I leave that to those guys to plan that kind of estimate, but I'm guessing from, if my pipe was here and the road was here and my house is there, how much is it gonna cost me to replace the pipe from there? Is it two thousand, is it five thousand, is it ten thousand?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Maybe different for every part.
But I, but I think that they need to have an estimate, if it's five hundred bucks, yeah, I can do it tomorrow. If it's five thousand, I might not be able to do it ever, without losing my house.
But it wouldn't be hard to ask to do that.
No, but I mean, somebody should have a rough estimate what it's gonna cost so many feet.
The timing is, is good, because you have contractors working in the street.
Yeah.
And if I was a property owner and I was notified I had a lead service, I'd walk out and I would tap Richie Hurlberg, the foreman on the shoulder, and I'd have the conversation about likely costs to do this. And, you know, as an experienced contractor, he could give him a range, he might even give him a quote. You know, so I think that they can provide the information based on the specific circumstances.
Is that helpful?
It's, it's helpful, yeah. I, it's...
Go ahead.
It's helpful, I think it's just that the consumer that's living in their house, I don't know how we worry about until something happens, right?
There are, there are, they'll come the individual household to get up the street.
Okay, so, did you want to make a motion, that we start doing that, or how do you wanna?
Yes, I can hear everything.
Well, but we need to do everything through motion, correct?
Do you want to give direction?
If you want to give direction, yeah, we need to do that. Go ahead.
Sometimes I can't figure out the CAO system and all that, what we can tell people do and what can't tell people to do.
Can't tell...
I'm happy to know that we can make a motion on this and therefore council, I move that when doing renovation, including the Cliff Street project, and, and we come across a situation where we expose a lead water lateral, that in addition to replacing the lead pipe from our water main to the curb stop or property boundary, whichever the case may be, that we, in addition to that, once we've done it, we notify the property owner that they have a lead pipe and that it would be recommended that they look into replacing that pipe at the earliest opportunity to take advantage of the opening that has been created by the town's works.
Got that Jody?
Yeah, well, watch the tapes.
We got it. Good, okay, moved and seconded?
And that's my motion, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion, any questions, anything before we?
Questions.
Dave, you good? Good? Okay, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you councillor, you want to turn your light out? I know you need it in a minute, but...
It's gonna be, you have to be open.
It's all good. No, good stuff. Okay, so anything else on the CAO report? Fire department?
I have a report to pass, if you can help us.
Any questions for the chief?
Yeah. I'd like to report. I got one.
Yep. Go ahead.
So I don't mean to be funny, uh...
But you need your light on though. You just have to hit it once and I'll turn it on.
All right.
There you go.
So chief, do we have any situations that you're aware of in town where this cladding issue that they encountered with the big fire in London would be, would be a problem here in Yarmouth?
Uh, no, I'm not aware of anything like that here, and I think our, our building code and everything covers it a lot better than theirs, so...
All right, good. That's all, that's the only question I, so the, the building and fire codes both?
Yeah, there's a fire code of Canada and a building code of Canada, and both of them cover it very well.
Thank you.
Good, anything else for the chief? Thank you. Planning department report. It's in front of us, and if anybody has any questions, we can find Morris. Good?
You gonna move the PAC there, there your worship?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Jim?
I'm just...
PAC meeting for the 11th, remember?
The notice has not been sent out yet. I expect it to be sent out over the next two days. For the next day at the usual time, seven o'clock. On Wednesday, Wednesday the 10th?
No, Wednesday's the 12th.
Okay, 12th, sorry about that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Good? Thank you. Okay. Operations, so this is the engineer's report, any questions on that? Dave, anything you needed to share with us besides what's on here? The bump oats are very popular, thank you.
Yeah, I know that. Let's see, yeah, let's see...
They are now, they actually are.
There's even a ton of actual one on John's...
Yeah, they're, just the usual, every, every change that's made has to go through a process.
Has anyone been driving on Oddwood Street the last two years? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Dave, and what's, what's the timeline for the tree shrubs and grasses and all the other things that'll be planted and constructed?
Okay, good.
Yeah, I didn't, I was supposed to ask that. Good, okay, thank you, lots going on.
Yeah, a lot.
Finance, I know, a lot going on, a lot of great stuff. Lot of comments about how Main Street's really busy now and full of people, so it's what we were after, we're getting. Finance department, Jerry, you got any money?
Yeah, we're still two months in, so... Yeah, just go out of the...
Major for both the town and the water utility. But two months in, there's some small variances, but nothing to be concerned about at this point. As far as the finance department, we're just still working on the water in town and getting prepared for the audit. So auditors will be in in a couple weeks for their, for those two units. Mariner Center and the Waste Park have both been audited and they seem to have gone through no problems, no issues, so just business as usual, I guess.
Good, any questions for Jerry? Good stuff, thank you. Recreation, we got that? Did I miss it? No recreation report? Okay. Okay, candidate, Dave's coming. Economic development report. Oh, wait a minute, I got a water utility and revenue, why do I have that? Oh, that went with the, sorry, I thought it was a separate. Economic development, we're good? Business arising, request for decision lateral, sewer lateral. Go ahead CAO.
Thank you your worship. So, back in April, council made a motion requesting a staff report to, a staff report on repairs to breaks in sewer lines, on taxpayers' properties, and to look into revising the sewer connection bylaw. So I prepared a report, I'm prepared to go through it right now if you'd like, or if you've all read it and want to get to the, to the nut of the issue, we can do that.
I'm just trying to find it. So everybody got that in front of them? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, I'll listen.
Okay. So, in our sewer connection bylaw, bylaw number nine, section 3.4 states that all costs associated with the installation, connection, maintenance and repair of a private sewer or building sewer connection to the municipal sewer system, whether in the street, highway or easement, including the cost of any necessary permits, are the sole responsibility of the owner. And that language was adopted from the Nova Scotia Model Bylaw Manual for municipalities, prepared by the Department of Municipal Affairs and circulated to all municipalities as a guide for establishing bylaws. So in short, we, we are following the standard in Nova Scotia for, for how we deal with sewer, sewer laterals. So generally, as background, connections to the sewer mains are made when development occurs. Connections are made at the property owner's expense and the work is carried out by the contractor of their choosing. The town makes the actual connection to the main, but beyond that, the work is done by the property owner's contractor. Through our bylaw, the town requires a deposit to ensure all work done within the street right-of-way is done properly. The deposit is forfeited if the work is substandard and has to be corrected by the town. If there's no deficiency, the deposit is returned after one complete frost cycle. Sewer mains and treatment infrastructure are owned by the town as they provide benefits to the community in general. However, sewer laterals are owned by the property owner they serve, whether on the property owner's property or in the street right-of-way or easement. Sewer laterals are only used by the property they serve and only benefit the single property. They are installed by the property owner, as previously mentioned, and only effluent, the only effluent as sewer lateral is effluent produced from the property, the owner's property. The point at which ownership changes from the property owner to the town is very clear and not subject to estimation or requiring professional expertise to establish. One pipe belongs to the town, the other one belongs to the property owner. When it comes to maintenance, the town has no access to sewer laterals. Cleanouts are typically located within the building they serve. The town does have access to sewer mains through manholes and regularly does sewer maintenance in the form of cleaning and removal of accumulated solids and, and video inspection. The same level of maintenance access is not available to the approximately 2,630 sewer laterals in our system. So why are, why are water laterals, why are water laterals different than sewer laterals? Water laterals are owned by the town up to the curb stop or the shut-off valve. There are a couple key differences. The curb stop has benefit to the town of Yarmouth's Water Utility and to all the customers as it is the shut-off valve for the water service. We're able to control who we serve and whether or not they're served through the, through the shut-off. We do not have the ability with water, as we do with sewer, to apply the bill to the tax, to the taxes. So our only, our best means of collection is taking the wrench out and turning the water service off when we're not paid. The curb stop is visible above the ground, making a clear, visible distinction of where ownership changes from the water utility to the property owner. So, in the case of a pipe below ground with no above-ground fixture, such as a sewer pipe, we'd be estimating where the property line is and estimating where in the pipe ownership changes, if we were talking about changing at the property line. Implications of changing ownership and responsibility. Homeowners who experience problems requiring excavation and replacement of their sewer lateral, through collapse perhaps, face a significant expense. Anecdotally, in the range of eight to twelve thousand dollars. For all homeowners, this is a significant expense and for some, can cause significant financial hardship. Some citizens would like the town to take ownership of the lateral and the financial obligation from the property line to the sewer main. The proposal, as understood, would have the town taking over portions of approximately 2,630 sewer laterals. Under the current arrangement, the town, if the town is called upon to respond to sewer issues at a property, we determine if there's a blockage in the sewer main, the portion that we own. If there isn't, we advise the homeowner that the problem is likely in their lateral and they should call a plumber. Our role and responsibility is clear and we can easily determine if the problem resides in the main, which is ours, or in the lateral, which is the property owner's. If the town were responsible for a portion of the lateral from the property line to the main, a homeowner would not know when it is appropriate to call out public works and when it is appropriate to call a plumber. As a result, the town would receive all of the first calls, as, as calling the town typically doesn't cost anything. If we own a part of the lateral, we have no way of determining the location of the blockage or collapse without snaking the lateral from the cleanout within the property owner's home. And once an obstruction is located, the public works employee would have to determine the distance of the obstruction from the foundation, the location of the property line, and the distance from the foundation to the property line. And essentially determine, is this problem in our part of the lateral or in the property If the obstruction appears to be within property owner's portion, it is likely the property owner would still want the employee to clear the obstruction or repair the collapse. Because the estimate required to determine the location of the obstruction, in cases where there's a close call, who makes the decision concerning the ownership and the significant expense? That would be a burden, put on an employee in a situation where they, they're facing a citizen under quite a bit of stress, likely, and, you know, they aren't necessarily qualified or empowered to make that decision. So the hardship faced by homeowners, faced with a collapsed sewer lateral is real and significant. It is in the same order of magnitude as other major home repairs, such as replacing a roof, painting, or siding a large home, replacing several windows, et cetera. In some cases, there are warnings, minor blockages that clear prior to a full collapse. In other cases, the collapse may be of sudden, more sudden or unexpected. Often, a homeowner might defer items like a roof, siding or windows, or complete repairs or replacement over time, i.e. do one side of the roof one year, the other side another year. A sewer lateral needs to be repaired when the problem becomes apparent. If it is difficult to predict what the financial impact would be to the town, as we have no definite records on how often this occurs, our best estimate, based on the information we have, is that the current rate of sewer lateral failure requiring replacement is approximately one per year. Over the history of the system, various materials were used in the sewer laterals, including clay and a no corrode product that has proven to break down over time. As years pass, it is possible that the rate of sewer lateral failure will increase. Ownership of the lateral is with the property owner. Citizens are requesting compensation for failure of sewer laterals when they occur in the street. Citizens believe they are unfairly faced with the cost of replacing street infrastructure such as sidewalk, curb and asphalt, depending on the situation. Further, there's a perception among some that there's a significant benefit to those living on the side of the street closest to the main. If council wished to provide some financial relief to the individual homeowners, there are some uncomplicated models that council could look at. Once the homeowner has completed a repair requiring work within the street right-of-way, the town could, in consideration of costs incurred for reinstating town infrastructure, reimburse the property owner a flat rate, such as, you know, three thousand dollars or something of that nature. Reimburse the property owner a set proportion of the entire repair cost. Reimburse the property owner a proportion of the repair cost based on the estimated proportion of the replaced lateral within the street right-of-way. Or, on behalf of the property owner, the town could replace the hard street infrastructure utilizing our tender for sidewalk and curb repair and patch paving required, requiring replacement in the sewer lateral repair. Or the town could waive the requirements for deposits... Or the town could waive the requirements for deposits, but retain a right to place a lien if the work done within the street right-of-way is substandard.
Can't close them. No. Go ahead, sorry.
Your worship, um, will you put windows in those doors?
Yeah, you're right.
For, for that reason?
Sorry.
Okay. Yep, no, I understand. Okay. So conclusions, the town follows the standard established by the Nova, Nova Scotia Department of Municipal Affairs in making sewer customers responsible for their laterals to the sewer main. The bylaw of the town of Yarmouth mirrors the provincial model. Altering the delineation of ownership would create ambiguity in responsibility when something goes wrong with the sewer lateral. Establishing responsibility based on a line that only a supervisor is properly qualified, sorry, a surveyor is properly qualified to draw could be an expensive burden on the taxpayers to resolve disputes arising from changing ownership status at the property line. The deposit we collect is almost never utilized to repair work done below standard. The town could consider approaching the deficiency issue another way, as described above. The town cannot give a grant to a property owner, however, the council could consider contributing to the cost of sewer lateral replacement in consideration of the costs associated with reinstating town infrastructure within the street right-of-way. Several options for how this cost sharing could be structured have been discussed. So recommendations from staff. Staff recommends there be no change to the ownership of sewer laterals, including the portion within the street, street right-of-way. And secondly, staff recommends to council, that council consider eliminating the deposit system for sewer lateral replacements, and amending the bylaw to allow the town to place a lien on the property to cover the cost of repairing any deficiencies or substandard work for 12 months following the issuing of a street disturbance permit for sewer lateral replacement. And finally, if council wishes to provide cost-sharing assistance to property owners who need to replace or repair the sewer laterals, staff recommends that council consider assuming responsibility for replacing asphalt and concrete street infrastructure following the replacement or repair of sewer laterals. That's for your consideration.
Phew, thank you very much. Good stuff. Excellent report. Go ahead. Who had their line up first? Wade?
Um, well, your worship, as you know, this has been kind of an issue for me since before I actually ran for council, because of just an awareness of this situation happening with people that I know. And so I kind of became a person who made enough noise that, that this came up. In reading this whole thing over, first off, thank you very much, Jeff, because to me, the, the compromise that's being made here is, is kind of perfect. The issue for me personally, and, and for many others as well, the ones who are actually going through this, isn't so much the fact that you have a problem with your lateral, it's the fact that they're required to tear up a street, tear up a sidewalk. It's their responsibility. They have to pay for the flaggers, they have to, and then they have to put a deposit down, the lien, if you will, in order to, you know, in case something happens in 12 months. So it just seemed a bit draconian, I guess is the best way to put it. And so I, I really wanted this addressed. To me, this compromise is, is the perfect way to do it, to, to set up the lateral, make sure that they own it, that's fine, but that we assume responsibility for the asphalt and sidewalk repair. I did ask a question to you when this originally came to me through the email, and we should do this probably publicly, and that is, my question as to whether or not, or how much, this would affect our budgeting. And perhaps you could answer that officially.
Make it up. Oh, sorry. I must have had, sorry, Jim, you'll be on next.
We're fine.
Sorry, Wade, I, I have to confess, I don't recall what the percentage worked out to, but I think we were talking about a cost in the area, might be in the area of $3,000 on a budget for asphalt and curb, curb and sidewalk repair. I think for, we're no, we're in the, going from memory, 150,000 or so, or was it more than that? Is that the number?
Yeah, I think it was, actually.
Okay, so it is not as significant if we're talking one a year, but I think in the email I mentioned to you that if we started running into a situation where we had multiple collapses or failures in a year, it starts to become significant, and, and you might want to review, review it at that time. But, yeah, if you're talking one a year, and we don't have perfect data, we don't have perfect data on that, but that seems to be about what, what seems to be occurring in the community.
Now, if, if we took on the responsibility just of repairing the, the street itself and, and the sidewalks, then that would come from our maintenance budget anyway. If there were multiple drops, of course, then, then that would affect our ability to do patchwork. But otherwise, it's pretty negligible as far as the overall budget goes, right? And it doesn't cause any increase in taxes or burden to the taxpayer theoretically, depending on how many falls or lateral failures were to happen.
If you're talking one a year, I think that would, so what would happen with those budgets? With patch paving and concrete, the concrete repair budgets? We plug a number in there, and we, we do as much work as the budget will allow. If we're talking about 1% of that budget, or 2% of that budget going to repair a specific situation around a sewer lateral, 1% or 2% is, is not going to make a huge difference. If we're talking, you have three or four of these a year, you're starting to get closer to 10% of your budget going to this. And so at that point, I think, I think it starts to become significant, and you think about increasing your budget, which, which has implications on, on, on tax rates or, or fees.
Good. Jim, and then Cliff.
The other night, when the public were speaking about, about this, it was a really good evening, and I appreciated the evening and the, and the discussion which you organized, and chaired well, Pam. And I too would be, as a result of that, would be thinking about a compromise. And at this point, would see us, I would see sort of agreeing with Wade as to how we, that's how I would want to go at this point. Thank you very much.
I've looked at the recommendation, and again, I thank Jack, Jeff, for this. I've had a number of ideas blowing around in my head, but I like Wade's suggestion here, which comes from the staff recommendation, which I also like, when we can get there. I have another reason why I support it. It's simple. For a large majority of our homes that are encountering these problems, it was the town who subsequently, after the installation of these sewer laterals, paved, repaired, curbed, did all those works, without thinking about it frankly, what was under the ground. And, "Look at me, stupid. I spent considerable money building a stone wall on my front lawn last year, and I forgot to think about where the water line, the sewer line is." And I, I hope to heck it lasts out, because I'm going to face a big bill if I ever want to pull that stone wall down and back. But in our case, we put the curbs on the streets where we put them, the places. We put pavement on the sidewalks. We do those things. And many times, I think in the past, it were probably done without giving a whole lot of thought, like I didn't give a whole lot of thought to what underlies, which is something owned by the property owner, that sewer lateral.
That's right.
So Wade, I'm gonna, if you come about making a, a motion on this, I'll certainly be supporting it. Thank you.
You good?
I just, and I think we, Jeff, we had a conversation here within the last couple of weeks, and when Mr. Crowe circulated the petition, I think some of the verbiage of the words in the petition was almost self-insurance. So, have you, did you think of any of that when you were putting this together? Or just because you didn't know how many there were going to be in a year, is, is, is build up a, a small nest egg of money for this?
Yeah, I think, I think based on the, based on the number we're, we're expecting, right? I, I don't think any, we have to take any particular measures to, to prepare for it. I think the, the insurance concept, when I was thinking about what, what people, what the individual property owners were looking for, was essentially for us to have their back, to be, to be the insurance against that catastrophic cost. And, you know, I say catastrophic, because I believe eight to 12,000 for some people is catastrophic. And, and so, what we're doing here is we're, we're taking a, a step towards that by, if, if you, if you accept this, is not, not taking a deposit, which is just holding their money for, for a what-if, which has never happened. And the other is replacing that, that hard infrastructure that homeowners don't usually go out and purchase, and they'll be shocked by the cost of it. But we purchase on a regular annual basis through contract. And so we can easily, easily do that and relieve part of that financial burden, and hopefully, you know, hopefully this doesn't happen to anybody ever again, but we know it will. And we hope that it doesn't cause financial hardship when it does occur, but it might. So this helps in, to some measure, in those occurrences.
You, Wade, and then Jim.
I'll allow you first.
Go ahead, Jim.
After you.
I was just, uh-
Call you guys by first names today.
We're fine. This is committee at the whole, your worship.
Thank you.
Pam, what's your name?
Your worship.
I was just thinking, how, will this affect Rodney Crowe? And a little bit of a tease with my friend Cliff. Cliff, you have a rock wall this high. I have a rock wall this high. So my, my, and I thought about that after all the discussion was taking place. I said, "Oh my gosh, if we have to do that over a 12 grand street." Anyway, your worship, Rodney Crowe, does it affect him?
So, your worship, I, I don't know the status of his situation, if he's had his work done already.
He hasn't.
He has not. So I would suggest to you that if, if you were to accept these recommendations, the, because the way the bylaw is written now, I would suggest we'd have to amend the bylaw to, to, to put this in, in place.
I think we should talk to a lawyer about this kind of question.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we should be discussing this here. Point of order, your worship. We're not talking about individual, this, we're not talking about individual cases here.
Just information, I, I respect that, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. I was going to say, what about me? No, just joking. Okay, so, Sandy?
I just want to understand, so, the new roads that we're putting in right now, the sewer main, and then the lateral that's connected to that, we're only going to replace up to the curb side of the lead ones, right?
So you're talking about water when you're talking about lead? That's the water line?
No, not the wa, oh, okay, that's the water line.
That's the water line, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, we're not going to replace up to curb side at all on these new pipes, on these new mains? So, if someone's pipe breaks down, that means our new streak, they're going to dig it up?
We are replacing everything within the street right-of-way, including the laterals,
Okay.
up to the property line, because we're, we're doing storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water.
Exactly.
And digging several times in trenches, so
Okay.
it's not practical to leave any, anything behind. So everything in the street will be, will be new.
Yeah, that was my issue, because I didn't want to see us do that, and then something happens to-
Absolutely.
And they dig up the street again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so to Cliff's point, let's ask the homeowners if you want to keep going.
Right, okay.
Yeah, on their property.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, perfect.
Okay, so, looks like you're on, Wade, finally.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. And I would like to move that council eliminate the deposit system for sewer lateral replacements, and amend the bylaw to allow the town to place a lien on the property to cover the cost of repairing substandard work for 12 months following issuing a street disturbance permit for sewer lateral replacement repair. And in addition to that, that we should assume responsibility for replacing the asphalt and concrete street infrastructure following the replacement or repair of sewer laterals. Boy, that was wordy.
Questions? Counselor, do you also include item one? Staff recommends that there be no change to the ownership sewer laterals, including the portion within the street right-of-way.
Does, does a motion have to be made for a lack of change, though? Because we're not changing anything there.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
So we understand.
Okay.
So, so that one's, that one's important to me. That one's really important to me, because this- Yes.
If, if that one is important, then maybe the motion should be to accept, accept the staff recommendations?
As written.
As written, and that includes no change on the ownership.
I'm fine with that. That's my motion.
That one's important to me, because I think in your report where you were saying it's, and I'm a, I consider myself a victim of this too, but it's just like the roof or anything else, except the timing of this just throws everything off. It's still your lateral, so that was, yeah, okay. So I got a mover, and I got a seconder. Any more discussion? Questions have been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, CAO. That was a really good work.
Okay, so to action this, I'll, I'll talk to the solicitor, and some of it will require bylaw amendments, so you'll see amendments coming forward for bylaw number nine. And so this is not, you know, we, we'll go to a council meeting in, in two weeks. That doesn't mean this is all in place as of that point. There will be some actions required subsequent to make it effective.
Educate the uneducated here, and, and that includes me. Specifically, actually. What, what kind of a timeframe are we speaking of for some kind of a, like a bylaw amendment?
So the, yeah, just go through the process.
Sure, so for bylaw amendment, now that you've given, you've given direction, any of this that needs to be actioned through an amendment to our sewer, sewer connection bylaw, solicitor will, will loan some assistance in creating the amendments. They can be on the agenda for the July council meeting for first reading. Goes to the August council meeting. You have a public hearing. You vote on second reading. If that passes, we put an advertisement in the local paper. Once that is advertised, it is law.
We good? Phew, man, that was a good one. PACE program. Go ahead, CAO.
Okay, the PACE program is a program that is sponsored or created by Efficiency Nova Scotia. They have the province's cooperation to, to extend this program to homeowners. The, the basics of it is that they're looking to increase or make energy efficiency accessible to people. So Efficiency Nova Scotia will, if you sign up for this program, they'll go at the request of a homeowner into a person's home. They'll look at, at how you heat, they'll look at your insulation, the whole thing. And they'll, they'll look at what upgrades could be done in your home to save you money. They'll look at, they'll do calculations to determine how much money you would save, and they'll do the cost benefit, and they'll determine if over a 10-year period, if you do the upgrades, if the payback actually exists for you to recover your investment. So, as a homeowner, you typically don't have the level of sophistication to do that analysis with comfort, so you wonder, you wonder what if. So Efficiency Nova Scotia contributes that, that sort of expertise. Our part in this program, as it's constructed, would be persons wanting to buy into the program would borrow the money from the town to be able to pay for those investments. And they would repay the loan on their annual tax bill over 10 years. And we could apply a, an interest rate to it that was, that was attractive, to make it interesting to them. So homeowners would be securing that loan essentially against their property like a mortgage, because we have the ability, the right and the obligation to put their property up for sale if they don't pay their bills. So if you default on this loan, it is the same as not paying your taxes. Your property goes for sale, through a tax sale. So, yeah, it essentially acts as a small mortgage. So, yeah, it essentially acts as a small mortgage. There is an administrative fee that the town, the province pays to Efficiency Nova Scotia for the first year of the program. After that, the town is expected to pay that, that administration fee, and that's in the area of $9,000. The, so I don't know of, I've never had a request come to the town asking for this program. It does exist in some other towns. I don't know at this point what the level of uptake or success is with that. It, it is an opportunity, so you have an option. I would suggest, my suggestion or recommendation to you is you defer. Don't, don't move forward with this at this time. If you wish to receive more information to make a better informed decision about that, Efficiency Nova Scotia has offered to have one of their staff come and speak to another council meeting to answer your questions. So those, I guess, are your options. You can, you can accept the, the let's wait and see, you can seek more information, or you can, you could decide to go forward with it.
Is this going to be available next year as well, or just this year? Because when I read it, it says the funding from the province deadline was before April 2017.
I don't know, I mean, that depends on success of the program, I would suggest. If it's been successful in the municipalities they've introduced it, I can't imagine the municipal, or, sorry, the province necessarily taking that, that incentive away. However, if they haven't had the level of uptake, or if municipalities have opted out after a year because of lack of uptake, the province might, might determine that it's a, it's not a success and withdraw support. So I don't know.
So in the end, we would be too late for this year anyway?
Yeah, we're, yeah, that's right, we're too late, we're too late for this year. I think if we were interested in signing up for the program, the Efficiency Nova Scotia would be here.
Yes.
Right away and anxious to get going.
Cliff, you're on.
So right now, Efficiency Nova Scotia's had a program on running, ongoing for quite some time that allows a homeowner to access inspectors that they recognize who will come to your home and do an energy audit. And then you can make up a decision on your own whether or not you're going to make all or a part of the improvements that are identified, the energy audit. And it seems to me, you know, we live in a free enterprise society, homeowners can make those decisions, they're not stupid. And, and really, this is a program, and all it does is add an added burden by creating, by, by giving a liability to the town to become a lender. And there are plenty of lenders out there who are prepared to help homeowners in most circumstances, and I frankly think we ought to just keep this on, we don't need to deal with it right now. I don't anticipate, I don't understand that there's any great demand for it.
Well, I think last year we said we're not a bank. We don't need to be a bank. It's a nice program. Okay?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, no, they do some of the ministry things.
Under that program, they do, that's how I think they're trying to earn their keep and make more money or something, but they do say that they will do the inspections and do a determination on the benefits and the net benefit and all this and that. At the end of the day, it, it's creating another pool of money from the town.
We're just, we're just hiring somebody.
We're competing with banks and the government and whoever else.
Go ahead, Jeff.
No, I was just going to make a comment about HRM. HRM, I think, has been the longest in this game. You may have heard of the SolarCity initiative that they had, right? So this is the mechanism basically that they use there, and they used, they worked with contractors to install solar panels for heating hot water. And I, I don't think they received the level of uptake that they had hoped. I mean, it wasn't a failure, miserable failure, but they, they did some of that. Solar voltaic was not at the, at the level that it was necessarily cost-effective at the time. I think the technology has improved, and I don't know if they've gone in that direction, I know they were considering it. So it has been done with some level of success, but I, you know, we're not, we're not having people knock on our door and ask us if it's available in our community. And as, as the council said, it, it's an opportunity for us to take on liability and risk, and if the community doesn't necessarily see a benefit or there's no demand, there's not necessarily a impetus to spend the $9,000 for, for the right to take on the liability.
And I think it's counselorhood, as stated before, it's just another, it's another download of a responsibility from the provincial government onto municipal taxpayers, right? So somebody gets the thing done, we've paid the administration fee, somebody buys a house, and then somebody else is going to pay eight years or whatever it is of, so it's, I think it's something we've got to look long and hard at, and I don't think, as you say, Jeff, sometimes maybe we don't have the appetite for it right now.
So what do, what's the motion? Is there a motion? Replace on file? Okay. Thank you. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, police advisory board appointments? Oh, sorry.
So your worship, there was a bit of a question and a little bit of confusion about, about the police advisory committee appointments. So our bylaw provides for two town-appointed members, and we went ahead and appointed three. So we had a bit of an issue. The confusion came in because we've always had three people around the table, and one of those people has been a provincial appointee. And, and we didn't go through the process of having one of them apply to be that provincial appointee. We've talked to the one, to one of the members who presently was appointed by council, asked if he would be interested in applying for that provincial appointee position. He has agreed, and so Linda is proceeding to get the paperwork in order for that application. So there's no action required by council, just wanted to let you know that the three people that you had hoped would be on that advisory committee are likely to be on that advisory committee, just one of them as a provincial appointee.
So do we need to do anything with that?
No, that's just for information.
Good. Thank you. All right, crosswalk flags. So my bad, I didn't forward the email, but I got a, an email from the Crosswalk Safety Society of Nova Scotia asking if we would like to purchase crosswalk flags at a discount, three sets for $300 as opposed to $600. So they, I think they're in a lot of communities, but basically, I think there's, I want to say a bucket, but there's a container, and there's flags, and you pick up the flag and you carry it across the street. Okay. Yep. Okay, so, I mean, I can let them, I can just advise that we aren't interested at this time. Does anybody disagree with that? Traffic Authority? What do you think? You want some flags and buckets? I got to tell you this, though, Mr. Traffic Authority. I can't even count how many people have commented on the bump outs and how much safer it is, those crosswalks. And I'm being, I'm being serious, like that people can see, actually see people as opposed to coming out from behind cars. It's really, it's really good stuff. It does slow people down, which is exactly what it was intended to do, right? Good job. For a minute, I was blaming those bump outs on you, and then I said, nah, council will take those. So it's good, Dave, really good. Thank you. Okay, previously distributed and additions. We didn't have any additions, so we are looking for a motion to go in camera. Good stuff.